You'll need to turn the mic on. Marty will get it fixed, I'm certain of that.
Okay, just to warn you, we're live now.
Okay, here we go. Sorry guys, embarrassing. Before we start to pray, I just want to tell you guys, thank you for your service and your leadership. When you serve in education in any capacity, I feel like it's a call from the good Lord and you guys have done it well. And so, thank you for your time. If you'll bow your hearts with me and let's pray. Dear heavenly Father God, we just thank you for tonight, Lord. We thank you for our school district, God. We thank you for these wonderful people who serve on our school board, who take the time to sacrifice from their families and just to serve our kids and to make decisions based on what would benefit them. God, we thank you for their hearts for kids. We thank you for their hearts for our community, Lord. And God, we just lift them up. God, I pray for our school district. I pray for our kids. I pray for our families, our community. Lord, you know all the struggles that are, that people are being faced with right now. And Lord, I just ask that you place a hedge of protection over them. God, I pray that you will just be in this school, that you will just meet us here every single day from 7:30 to 4:00, 6:00, whatever it is. God, I just pray that you will just be with our kids, Lord. God, I pray that you will be with our faculty and our staff. God, I pray that you will just help them be the light for you and just be your hands and feet as they walk among these kids every day. And God, that more importantly, that these kids will see you through this faculty and staff. God, I thank you for just the community that, of godly. Lord, I pray that they answer the call anytime anyone needs help or anyone is in need. God, I pray that for our community to keep supporting our school district, Lord. I pray that we will come together and just be able to serve our kids. Lord, I just thank you for who you are. I thank you for whose we are. God, I just thank you for just all that you've blessed us with. Lord, I just ask that you just be with us tonight during this meeting. God, help us have the discernment that we need to make good decisions that will just benefit our kids. Lord, and I just thank you for the time and effort of these people. Lord, in your name I pray, amen.
Alright, and next we will have our pledge by our sixth grade campus. So, I know I spoke to many of the sixth graders there. I want to tell you all, thank you for coming to lead us in the pledge. It's very important that we remember where we are focused. So, thank you all again for taking time to come and lead us in that.
Thank you. Oh, hello world. This is our principals advisory council. And so, I just want to tell you just a little bit about who they are and what they do. These kiddos had a pretty extensive interview process to be a part of our principals advisory council. And our group really has two roles. The first role is to impact our campus through leadership and decision-making. We always want, it's their school, right? So, we want their input. And so, they advise in that capacity. And then, in addition to that, we just have a heart for service. And so, they go with us when we go on service opportunities. So, they have made cards for nursing homes. They have been to Legacy to read and do crafts with younger students. We're going to the Tarrant area food bank this Thursday. And they love going, they love serving. You just won't find a better group of kids. And so, it's an honor to get to work with each and every one of them. If it's okay with you, we would love to just recognize them with a certificate this evening and have you meet each one of them personally. Okay, we're gonna start this evening with Ifalua Doja. Next, Mia Alejandro. Some may not be here. We have some sweet kiddos who are ill this evening. Anthony Azbetta, Gavin Jamrin, Aubrey Daniel, Presley Dartor, Cooper Day, Gracie DeFour, Peyton Halleck, Maddox Hill, Harper Jabberi, Haven Lilly, Hadley McClure, Janessa Melgoza, Martha Moreno, Helen Navarez, Mason Nichols, Adely Perez, McKenna Robinson, Macy Singleton, Piper Sosby, Nash Staton, Peyton Steele, Blakely Thompson, Hoyt Thornton, Max Van Wart, Piper Wade, and Baylor Wellborn. Okay kiddos, will y'all come up? We're gonna get a picture of you with the board.
And our next recognition is school board recognition. January's school board recognition month, so our campuses collaborated to provide you with your swag bags here. You've got some godly stuff. And we just like to take time to recognize our school board members who work tirelessly to support our school district and our students. Because you guys support our kids in so many ways and it's so much more than just board meetings. You guys attend ballgames, you come to ag shows and band concerts, you go to monthly construction tours, you're active members of the booster clubs and PTOs, you help decorate for banquets and proms, even volunteer for the concession stand. And you guys just work tirelessly to support our students. And we appreciate everything you guys do. You hold us to the highest standards. You model patience and grace because you know that greatness doesn't happen overnight. And you are the embodiment of love, positivity, and vision. And anyone who meets you knows that you guys love godly ISD. And we just want to say that we really appreciate y'all. So, thank you very much.
Thank you, Dr. Dear. Next, we'll go into superintendent reports.
So, our first is construction update. We'll start with S and P. Like I said, we'll start with Reader.
I thought it was a good plan too. Alright, so January update. I was not able to get new photos of the exterior just due to anytime I was out here, it was raining. So, we'll move into the interior. So, this is CL&amp;I as of today. For the most part, finished. A few odds and ends that we're trying to wrap up. We've got some AV equipment that still needs to go in, working through a last-minute change on that. Give you guys a better system than what was intended. Little bit of solid surface counter caps. And then, we still owe a very large awesome graphic that should be in in about three weeks, I think. And as far as the kitchen goes, we're still missing the serving lines. The serving lines are supposed to arrive February 12th. And that's a quick two-day install. We'll probably try to do that over a Saturday, Sunday while you guys are out. And same thing for the art rooms. One art room is complete. Another one, we're working through a little bit of a change in the paint scheme above ceiling. Once we get that figured out, that'll probably happen over spring break. And then, this is the choir hall. This was as of today. Looking to start tape bed process, mostly above ceilings done. We've got a lot of the furniture stored in there right now. And then, this is the band hall. So, the photo on the right is the band hall. The photo on the left is kind of one of the band director's office suite. Still have quite a bit of work to do in the band hall. One of the issues we're working through right now is related to the roof. We've got a concrete roof deck over the storm shelter and it has not dried out as it needed to for us to install the original roof. So, we are working through a slightly different roof system than what was specified. Working through that with Huckabee, they're helping out. We hope to get that figured out the next week and then all the materials readily available. It's just figuring out what that process is. And so, I know as of right now, obviously, January 24th for the storm shelter is not going to happen. We've been working through and monitoring the problem with the roof for the last month or so. It did not dry out like we had hoped it was going to. And so, that really is gonna push us back about a month just because we're to the point now where we need to be dried in to move forward with finishes. So, right now, we're looking at probably the week of spring break for finish and turnover.
I have a question. Can you tell me about the kiln in the art room? It's, I know that some of the...
Sorry, yeah. So, the duck work, everything's there. The kiln, I think, is supposed to be in our hands, not next week, but the next. And then, it's a plug-and-play install.
Did I understand that it might not be wired correctly for the kiln? Have you heard anything about that?
No ma'am, that would be news.
That might not have been correct information.
That would be news to me. And even if it was, the way those are wired up, that's a quick fix. Even if there is an issue, yes ma'am.
Okay, great, thank you.
So, that's not something you should worry about at all. Any other questions?
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
S and P?
So, these photos are from the end of last week. This is obviously looking at the Wild from the west elevation. You can see we have the metal panels ongoing. They're all on site, so that'll be completing here pretty quickly. You can see, we also have the sidewalk installed underneath. It's a little hard to see with the shadow. We'll see it a little bit better as we get further into it. This is from the east elevation of the Wild. You can see all the glasses in. The metal panel installation's actually continuing down that, above the collaboration spaces over there on the top of the CTE, the Wild. As well as, you can see, we're starting to install railing there at the second floor and we'll work our way around and up the precast. All that railing's on-site, so you'll see that installation ongoing. And there you can see the sidewalk that we poured under the CTE, the colored concrete. So, the areas that are left out gets red. You'll see that getting poured here in the next couple of weeks as well. This is going through the inside. You can see, we have a lot of the finishes in. This is the first floor as well as up on the second floor in one of the science rooms. We have all the heat getting turned on on all the floors by the end of the week. So, you'll start seeing floor finishes go in, which will be real good and make a big difference there. We also have the elevators getting delivered next week. So, you'll see those installs occurring at the end of the month and that'll take about four weeks to get put in. This is up in the science lab. You can see, we already have some of the furniture up there as well as the booth. This is going over the connector and the Alt 1, which is the baseball viewing platform. You can see a lot of the steel's installed there. The structural steel is actually completed as of the end of last week. You'll see decking's starting to get installed on top with the pore on the portion of the connector there that's left out as well as that deck to follow. And here you can see, we're installing the rails on the connector on both sides. You'll see those going in as well as the metal panels and the brick continuing to work its way around from the south side to the north side. This is looking at the Alt 1, the baseball platform, just showing that the connection of the steel there. Going over the arena, you'll see from last week, we got all the glass and all the miscellaneous openings that were pending on the exterior of the building. Metal panels are working on the way around and we're continuing that install here. Some of this material's getting moved out, so it'll start to get cleaned up there. Going inside the arena, you can see, we got a lot of the lights installed above the big athletic lights as well as the scoreboards on the lower areas. And the lockers are set in the locker rooms there. You'll start seeing the game clocks, the time clocks in the locker rooms and the hallways starting to get installed. And then, the platform should be getting taken down at the end of this week, starting on the north side, working its way around. Heat in here should also be turned on by the end of the month. So, we'll start ramping up on the finishes in there and moving on from there. This is up on the second floor, looking out to the arena. One thing to keep in mind too is that we're working here, the field. Wanted to give you all a quick update on that. We're completing the in-ground electrical that's inside the field. The turf is ready and will be delivered next week with install starting after that, pending weather. So, that'll make a huge difference out there on the appearance of your track and turf. Right now, we're tracking for 319 for the CTE connector and 513 for the arena.
What was that, second date?
513.
I have a question.
Yes.
I was out there on Friday and I hadn't been in about a month or two. And there was quite a bit of, a lot of difference. And so, I do want to say, it was pleasant to see all of the progress that's been going on. One thing that struck me though is I didn't see a lot of people working. Like, how many people are out there on a daily basis on average working? I know we're at subcontractor level now, but I just felt like there weren't a whole lot of bodies out there.
So, for the last several months, we've been running anywhere from just under 100 all the way up to about 140 subcontractors. One thing to keep in mind as you're walking here, obviously, that's spread out between the CTE, the connector, and the arena as well as Area F. So, there's a lot of places out there for those workers to be.
What is your anticipated completion date for the field?
So, right now, the contractual completion date for the field is March 11th. We're pushing right now. We have a game plan. We've presented to the architect and to the district for getting that turned over for the 23rd, February 23rd, I believe, is the first soccer game. Obviously, pending weather. If we get a lot more weeks like this, it's something we're gonna have to dig into. But we have a plan in place to hit that date.
Thank you. Yeah, that's the reason I'm asking is really want our soccer teams to be able to enjoy that field this year.
Absolutely.
Not just next year.
Yeah, and we're pushing everything to get that installed and ready for y'all.
Guys, did the practice fields as well, correct? Or is that Reader?
That's Reader.
Oh, sorry. I always get that wrong. I just, I noticed there's a lot of weather erosion going on out there. Is that something that we're gonna go back and try to fix or...?
Yeah, so the erosion that's directly around the fields, my landscaper should be correcting that, if not this week, next week. And then, we're gonna put down hydro mulch and that will take care of what's right around the fields as far as along the drive. That's, we don't have any work around the drive.
Okay.
Does that completion include the track?
No, the track will be, depending on everything set around there. With it being a sprayed-on surface, that, we need that full surface. It's gonna take three weeks. So, that duration's gonna start from once y'all's soccer games finish, which I believe right now is March 8th. I think this is the date I saw on y'all's schedule. Is that correct?
That's something we can address. Any other questions? Thank you.
Alright. We wanted to give you guys an update on our volunteer process. In light of recent events, we've reviewed and updated and improved our volunteer protocol. So, Mr. Carnes is gonna tell us a little bit about it. And Mr. Hunt?
Yeah, brought my trusty sidekick, Mr. Hunt, with us. So, yeah, so in, good evening and happy Board Appreciation Month. And so, thank you all for what you do. But yeah, so we just wanted to come and just give you a quick update and answer any questions that you might have. You know, our volunteers, you know, we're thankful for all of our volunteers. And I know Dr. Cottle does a great job through her face committee and engaging people and finding people who are willing to volunteer at all of our campuses in many different capacities. And so, anytime that we have a volunteer who wants to come and work with kids, they do have to go through a criminal background check. And then, that is run through the central office. And then, we have guidelines that we use that if there is anything that shows up. So, we have internal guidelines that we use to determine if somebody can volunteer or be employed for that fact. So, but sticking with volunteers and visitors, then anytime that they come to campus, our camera system, Vercotta that we use, we also use that for when people come to volunteer or visit when they show up on our campuses, that they use a photo ID and then that is scanned. And then, the visitors then get a pass and a yellow lanyard to know, to identify that they are visitors and/or volunteers serving on campus. So, in addition to the policy, we have our internal procedures that we use to keep track and take care of things. And so, yeah, so I feel like we're, we've taken some of the information. We've improved, we've gotten better. And thanks to Brian Hunt and those that are working with him, you know, for safety and well-being, one of our pillars. And so, we believe that we're in a good spot with our, with our background checks and who's coming on campus and what they're doing. So, any questions?
So, I have a few questions. Have we changed our policies to be more strict with our background checks for our volunteers in light of recent failure? Are we doing background checks that include misdemeanors? And are we looking for those red flags?
Yes ma'am.
Okay. Were we doing that prior? Do we have an answer as to how the ineligible volunteer was allowed to volunteer on campus?
As to how? So...
So, I would say, you know, every system we run depends on the validity of the system. And we have to run it a certain way and do certain things. We've looked at doing some, we've done some different training and procedures to make those systems work in our behalf, in our benefit. So, to answer your questions, yes, we've reviewed some of those. But again, it's, sometimes it comes down to the validity of the system. And it's not perfect, but we've got dual systems now that catch one another, Vercotta and DPS. And so, if one misses one, we're hoping the other will catch and vice versa.
Okay. Yeah, my concern is just with the other volunteers we have on campus. If one was able to slip through the cracks, is there a possibility for any others? I just want to make sure that our safety of our kids is a high priority.
I can tell you, the safety of our kids is our highest priority, absolutely. And like Mr. Hunt said, correct me if I'm wrong, but I think we're required by law to use the DPS system, which is one you were talking about. But on top of that, we use the Vercotta system. And we've, we've turned on every, we've clicked every box and turned on every switch we can with that to hopefully catch any others like you're talking about.
So, I want to ask the question just a little bit differently. I think I know the answer, but I'm gonna ask it anyway. Do we feel we identified root cause and have made changes to address that?
Yes sir.
Thank you. Any other questions?
Alright, thank you guys very much.
Next, we have public participation. At this time, we extend the opportunity for public participation portion of this meeting in compliance with Section 551.007 of the Texas Government Code. We have Ms. Olson, who has signed up to speak. Public participation provides general public the opportunity to address the board regarding topics listed on the agenda. Persons attending the meeting and wishing to participate in a public forum must complete the form and submit the form to the board secretary or designate 10 minutes prior to the meeting being convened. Each individual addressing the board will have three minutes to make their presentation. Personal attacks on board members, district employees, or students will not be allowed. All participants are expected to speak with respect, civility, and maintain calm, professional demeanor. Upon the expiration of the three minutes, if we, I guess we don't need that since we have only one person signed up. So, Ms. Goodlow will keep our time for us. Ms. Olson? If you can come to the podium, please.
So, board, I want to address you tonight. In light, I am glad that this, first of all, that this was on the agenda. I'm not exactly happy about how it's on the agenda, but I am speaking about the recent child safety failure related to the volunteer process. So, I want to remind the board that, because it seems like some of you have forgotten or maybe just ignorant of the process, but you're supposed to hold Dr. Dear accountable. And then, you work for me, the taxpayer, every taxpayer here. So, your responsibility is to serve us. So, your responsibility is to serve us. We're the voters, we're the taxpayers, and then you hold Dr. Dear accountable. He works for you, not the other way around. So, I think, in light of the fact that this was on the agenda, you know, one thing that's really disappointing is nothing is ever provided to the taxpayer. There's a very short agenda here. It just says volunteer process. And I noticed that, first of all, no board members appear at any business on this agenda. So, I would hope that you, as representatives of the taxpayers, as serving the taxpayers, would be the ones leading these business items. And I would think that child safety would be the first and foremost. So, Ms. Lane, thank you for asking further questions, because had you not asked questions tonight, this would have been like, hey, we're doing great, and we improved our process, but there would have been no information. Mr. Stevenson, thank you for clarifying that there was a root cause analysis done. Those are the kind of, that's the kind of information that I expect to be handled at a board meeting. So, I just, I guess in closing, I would hope that going forward, that board members would take the lead in bringing items. You guys seem to have all voted as a majority to say, oh, now we're going to require three people, which seems to me to be an abdication of your responsibility. If one person has a really important agenda item, maybe like child safety, I would think that that would be something that you would want, if one person wants it, let's get it done. So, again, thank you for the two of you that clarified this, some of this. Had you not done that, we have been in the same exact position, not knowing anything about what had been done, what had been changed.
All right. Next on the agenda is campus spotlight for the sixth grade campus.
All right, Ms. Wynn, come on up and take it away. Tell us about the sixth grade campus. Some of these bright-eyed students in front of us.
Okay. All right, well, we're going to highlight some good stuff. We're excited to be here. Thank you so much for having us. I'm Stephanie Wynn, campus principal at G6. This is Michelle Swam. She's principal at Link's and DAP, and then she also serves on the sixth grade campus. We're thrilled that our sixth graders are still here. Thanks for hanging in. Y'all are fixing to see some pictures of you guys, and they are 200% R.Y. So when we show up, it's because of these guys. And I can say that for every staff member that's sitting in the back as well. It is 100% my favorite thing about Godly ISD, is that people are kind, people love kids, people want to do the right things. You don't have to ask for volunteers. People are begging you to do the right thing. So, it's just an honor and a privilege to be here. I can tell you that every staff member here deserves a cape. They really are the superheroes that put the feet on the ground and make the magic happen. We're going to talk just a little bit about our front office staff. Maybe? Yeah. Okay. So, I can't leave them out. I would describe them as the heartbeat of the campus. So these are the people who are the face. They're the people you see when you walk in the door. They're going to, if your child's sick, they're going to love them through it and get them what they need. If a teacher needs supplies, they're going to, they're going to jump to their feet and get it done. I, a moment ago, it's our librarian, I should have highlighted her earlier, y'all, I apologize. Ms. Steele, will you please stand? She's instrumental with the pack as well. You saw her standing up here with me. But, I mean, anything I go to her, she's like, yes, yes, is it for kids? Yes, I want to do it. And I can say that for every person up there. Those are our peer professionals too, so they are working one-on-one with kids and small groups with kids. And you ask them about a kid, they can tell you everything about them, what they had for breakfast, what they did for summer break, because they're just dedicated. So, blessed and honored to be with these people every single day. Okay, before we move on, I do want to talk just a little bit kind of about what's happening at G6. And I know, we love kids, our first priority is always safety, but right behind that, we want kids growing and learning. And so, I want to talk to you just a smidge about what we're doing to help kids grow and learn, and I'm going to do that by content. We know that to move the needle in education, there are really two things to focus on. The first is rigor, and the second is student engagement. How can we get the brain cells clicking, and how can we get you to play along? And so, we've kind of decided as a campus, like, how can we learn more about those things and get better in those areas? And we've done that through three things. We have weekly PLCs where we sit and learn together, and these are the two primary resources we use. We use the Fundamental Five, and this is the second book to that, which is Revisited, where they come in and kind of clarify some of those strategies. And then, this is my favorite book, Teach Like a Champion 3.0. I have 2.0, I have the first one, I have all of them, because it just has a wealth of knowledge and strategies, and it's something that you can pick up right now and say, what can I do tomorrow? Like, I'm seeing this isn't working, what can I do? Won't cost you a penny, won't cost you a lot of time. And so, we have started really diving into those and starting to implement those things in our classrooms. I will tell you, when Dr. Cottle stood up here and talked about Dr. Dear being the lead learner, that is true. And he's the reason that we were able to bring the Fundamental Five Revisited forward, and it's just instrumental in everything that we do. Okay, I'm moving on to our ELR team. This is English Language Arts and Reading. And I could put 100 pictures of them up, dressed up, doing all the things, standing on their heads, cartwheels. But you want to talk about rigor, you go in these classrooms, because they set the bar and they make those kids work to reach it. And so, but they also do super fun things. I've never seen a group of English teachers who are so passionate about kids reading. And yes, all teachers say, you should read. They inspire kids to read, because they are readers themselves. And so, and they put things in place. They do March Madness, which is like a playoff of basketball. They've done, what was that one? It was, yeah, the Little Cafe. They called it a book tasting, and they had, like, their whole room decorated as Starbucks, and you come in and you get a treat, and you sit down and read. And, I mean, any way they can get a book in the hands of a kid, they're going to do it. And it's really, really powerful. In math, really, I would say the same thing. They're, they're just anything they can do to get kids to learn. But they have been gracious enough to also let me introduce a new process, which is their Friday Quick Check. So we kind of have these big, like, map testing at the beginning, map testing in the middle, and you'll see some of those statistics in there. But then what are we doing along the way to make sure kids are getting it? Because if I wait until December to see if you learned what I taught in September, it's too long. So, they have jumped, and when I said, hey, I want to introduce you to this, what do you think? They're like, yes, let's do it. So do, we do a quick little Friday Quick Check every Friday. There's an example in there for you. They make them, they look at the teaks, and they say, this is what we're going to teach, and then they backward design. They're really focused on planning and making sure that they are putting the best information in front of kids. And then, on Friday, they take the quiz, they turn them in to me, they give me percentages, how did kids do, and I go through and look at them too. And then we meet during PLC, and we review that data and say, how are we going to, how are we going to assist these that didn't get it? And woo-hoo, look at all the kids who did. And, and so, it's super fun to celebrate with them every week. I mean it when I say, when you say please, they say absolutely, we're here for the kids. I want to talk a little bit about student engagement with the next probably three slides. If you've not met a Ben Causey and a Julie Schroder, you need to swing on by. That's because they know it's true. So, these two people, they do more hands-on activities with kids than I have ever seen in a classroom before, truly. It's every week. And I think some of that just comes from their own inquisitive nature, like, they're very curious themselves, and so that just passes right on to their kids. And these kids love them. I mean, they would be, they love all their teachers. They're all fantastic in different ways, but super great at hands-on activities, getting kids curious, and helping them learn. I would say the same thing for our STEM teachers. Our STEM teachers, they wear many hats. They teach typing, they teach social studies, and they teach STEM. And, and that's a lot to ask a teacher to do. And they do it all while making sure that the instruction is hands-on, student-centered, kids taking the lead. I have, you should see Mr. Rody's, just the number of pictures he has with kids working with their hands in his class. It's really amazing to see. And then, of course, we can't leave out our electives. This is step one for many of these kids in art and band. And it is amazing what these teachers do. They are the king and queen of formative assessment, in the moment, hand over hand, this is how you fix that. And because of that, the kids have grown and grown and grown. I don't know if any of you attended the sixth grade concert in December, but many of those kids did not pick up an instrument until August, and then they're sitting in a room playing music all together. It's amazing. And I would say the same thing for art. So they, they are working, working to make sure that these kids are successful and that they love those things. I can't move on without talking a little bit about RTI, because one of the questions you're asking, if you've kind of been paying attention to the percentages, by the way, credit to Jeff Guest, Jeff Guest, who helps me gather and track all that data, is, well, what about the kids who aren't growing the way we would expect, right? And I will tell you, I wrote some of this down, because I just couldn't believe it, like, we had 25, 29% of kids grow like 200 times, like 200% of what they were expected to grow. Like crazy. We saw numbers that I was like, I've never even seen that in this system. But we do have a few that are growing at a slower rate. We have very few that showed no growth. And so, what are we doing for them? So we have been very, very intentional about our RTI time. At the end of the first nine weeks, when we really knew our kids, we did a total revamp. And we said, okay, these are the kids who are struggling in math, let's give them a math intervention. These are the kids who are struggling in reading, let's give them a reading intervention. These are the kids who are struggling in both. And then, we went a step further and said, how are we serving our GT kids? And we put them together so that we could do some real rigorous activities with them to extend their learning and make sure they weren't stagnant either. And so, that time, that 45 minutes a day, is really instrumental for us. Like I said, super intentional about that and excited to see the growth from that. Okay. We're coming toward the end, but I would love to say this, they're the life, right? They are, they're excited to see themselves. They are the joy. They are the joy. I mean, every day, they're funny, they're witty, they're, they are hardworking, they come and they smile and they laugh, and it's contagious. And, and so, it is important for us too, that we are taking time to really enjoy those moments with them. So, we went to a pep rally, we loved that. We've had a dance. We do things during lunch to try to get them up and engaged and having a good time. And so, it's just a pleasure every day to get to work with them. Truly, they are the why.
That's for last. Okay, I'm just kidding. I just really want to brag on my, my Link staff and my DAP staff. They all make it happen that I can bop between three different places in one day and try to do all the things. We've had a teacher that's been out for a while, so I have a picture of Mr. Sebastian, he's one of our subs in our district, that just always steps up and does everything we need him to do and comes in. And we have to be there a little bit early, like at 7:00 in the morning before everybody else gets here, and he has no problem coming in. But my, my support staff is just awesome over there at Link's and DAP. We're doing very well in both areas this year. Our total students for Link's has been 31 so far. I was just talking to Mr. Metter, that we're having another Link's graduation next week, and it's going to be one of our biggest ones that we've ever had. We're looking at between nine or 10 students that are going to graduate next week. We had to wait on STAR scores, and we did really well with our STAR testing in December. So, we're very fortunate that we can get that done. And we recovered two, I feel a tear on that, we recovered two students that were unable to graduate in their, with their class up to over a year and a half ago, that we recovered. They just kept coming in, and we kept tutoring, and they kept taking the STAR test, and they finally passed. So, they will be graduates this year. So I'm really, really excited for those two students to have that happen. DAP, we're running about on schedule, the same as we did last year. Knock on wood. Since we had our District of Innovation change to that, I had no more vape students come to my, come to DAP so far, so that's been an awesome change. Thank you for your support in that area. But once again, just a shout out to my staff to help me do what I can do, and you over here and help Ms. Wynn with all these awesome students over at sixth grade.
Okay, if you are a student or a staff member from G6, would you please stand and be recognized at this time?
Okay. The last thing we want to do is really just say thank you to you. We couldn't do it without support. We couldn't do it. Education is hard. And, and so, we just want to say thank you. Hey, G6 kiddos, will you help Mr. Guest pass these out? We know you got a goody bag, and it's filled with all the goods, but we felt like you couldn't leave tonight with one more gift from us. Maybe not your traditional gift, but we hope you love it, and we thank you, because these people are my superheroes, and so are you.
Ladies, your energy and passion is palpable. And I'm a true believer that when you have that kind of positivity radiating from you, it is absolutely going to be reflected by your staff and your students. So keep up the good work.
Could our sixth grade staff and students come up here, because we'd like to take a picture with you guys? We're not going to let you off that easy.
Oh, pretty. Oh, it's an apron. I love it. Couldn't keep y'all out there guessing what it was.
All right. The next business, or the next agenda item is the business items. Discussion of long-range facility planning.
Okay, last month, our long-range facilities planning team made a recommendation for a bond that's coming made, so we just wanted to give you guys an opportunity to talk about that a little bit more. So, Aubrey, go ahead and review us on the recommendation.
All right, good evening. So just a couple of items to update you on, just to make sure you're clear on the recommendation that was given to you. This is a reminder of where we are in the bond planning process. Right now, we're in that discussion phase. You all have seen the recommendation. You all have seen the recommendation and the deadline to call an election, if you choose. For May is February 16th. And I know that there's been some questions asked specifically about what the updates were between meeting four and meeting five of the Long Range Facility Planning Committee. So I've got a couple of highlights from that, just to make sure everybody's clear on that. So just as a reminder of what was presented to you last month by the committee, were these projects listed here? In meeting four, the value of those projects was almost $325 million. What happened after meeting four is we took all of those projects that the committee recommended and the schedules that we had proposed, which were based on need, such as the middle school and new elementary school demographics, when that's projected to be needed before your campuses hit capacity. And we gave those to the financial advisor and asked him, do you all have the bonding capacity to be able to fund these projects at this schedule? And he came back and said that was extremely aggressive. And so between meeting four and meeting five, we looked at a number of options on how can we stagger these projects a little bit differently while still prioritizing the growth projects and make sure that you've got the seats for students when you need them. And so that's how the recommendation went from $324 million in meeting four to $355 million, which is what you saw for the same amount of projects. It was handling the cost escalation that resulted in moving some of these projects out. We looked at a number of options. This was the highest of the escalation options. So what this does is it gives you, as a board, the flexibility year by year as the actual growth and the actual values come in to make those decisions on what is the highest priority at the time. So we think whether you go with project A or project B this year, we feel comfortable that the escalation costs are covered. Hopefully, if the growth comes faster, then we won't need to push things out as far, and you'll save on escalation costs. The second thing that we talked about in meeting five was two of the recommended projects at the high school were the special education classrooms and the auditorium. And the current high school master plan just poses some challenges with making that happen. Not impossible. We can always reevaluate the master plan, but we did just want to make you all aware, based on how it's currently laid out. The auditorium, you can see, is the blue box in the upper right-hand corner, and that's kind of diagonal from where the Phase III addition is that's going in right now. Green, orange, and yellow are all part of a future bond. So you can see, they're not very integrated with each other yet as the plan sits now. And really, the proximity of the auditorium to the band hall, to the theater, is really the way it's laid out, the way it is right now. And if we build the auditorium prior to building the green multi-story classroom addition, it does make the logistics of that very challenging in the future, because it will be walled in on three sides by an active campus and on the fourth side by your parent drop-off loop and your student parking. So just from a site logistics standpoint, having access to that construction site, space for material laydown and things like that, it will be a challenge. I will never say it's impossible, but I just want you all to be aware of what's ahead, should this plan move forward as is. And the other item is the special education classes were originally part of that multi-story classroom addition. So we would just need to rethink where they go within the overall high school, whether we rethink where their permanent home is, or maybe we give them a temporary home, perhaps by building the shell of the Black Box Theater and placing them there now, and then moving them into the classroom addition in the future. So those were the items that were discussed in meeting five that brought us to the final recommendation. So this, again, is the committee recommendation and all of the projects listed. You can see those highlighted in yellow were those projects that were impacted by schedule push and therefore cost escalation. And that adds up to almost $355 million. This does not include land, which we understand is another recommendation by the district administration.
Can you go back a slide?
To the high school?
No, back where you were. They changed it right when I said it. Okay, so I just would like to clarify. I was under the impression that it was a unanimous decision by the committee to bring all of these projects to us as their recommendation, but then I see some percentages here. Can you explain that to me?
Yes, so the committee agreed that any individual project that achieved a 70% vote or greater would make the cut for the overall proposal. So those are the individual project votes. And then at the end of the night, when all of these projects were shown to have achieved that 70% or higher mark, we took one final vote on the total package. And that total package received 100% support by the committee members. So that, it's the individual projects that made the cut, and then the 100% support is the final collective vote on the package.
I did want to clarify that that final vote that she's talking about, it was for the $324 million. There was a last-minute meeting, number five. I was not able to attend. I don't know how many people attended that, where it was that extra $30 million came into play. I don't know if that would have changed the vote from meeting four, if they knew that that was going to be an additional $30 million for the same amount of projects, but I just wanted to make that clear, that that vote was for $324.
Have we communicated with the committee since the contingency, or I'm sorry, the escalation was put in there?
So meeting five was called, and that's where we discussed this at length. I'll turn it over to district personnel to know what other correspondence may have happened outside of the meeting itself.
Yes, I mean, there were emails sent out to all the committee members by Ms. Barnes and posted in her Google Docs folder, and we regularly posted on the district website and through Parents Square the updates, the meeting summaries, as well as the meeting presentations, as well as demographic studies.
Have you heard back from any committee members that weren't able to be at meeting five, that were questioning the escalation prices being included? Are there any committee members here tonight? I know there's a couple. Can you stand up for me, just so I can see? If you feel strongly about the escalation price being included, if that changed your mind, would you mind coming to the podium and talking to us so we can hear from you as a committee member?
Is it still on? Okay, so for me and a few of the committee members that I spoke with, the $324 million is still the $324 million, essentially. It's they couldn't get the projects done, the construction completed in time, so therefore the escalation is the only reason for the extra million, you know, the $30 million. But there's no additional, to me, it made perfect sense. The $324 million is still the $324 million. It's just escalation. And I don't know that everyone understood that, but as, you know, from us in the committee, that's what it is. That's the extra $30 million.
So does the escalation concern you? Does that, does it change your opinion?
I don't feel that there's any, we have no control over it.
Right.
So that's why you can't do anything about it. I mean, it's, the escalation is the period in which we take, and it's a responsible approach, too. It's better than overextending ourselves and going beyond our capacity to financially cover the projects. So the escalation, it's a more financial, it's a financially responsible approach.
Kayla, you were a committee member, so does including the escalation change your mind? Because if they had 100% committee approval of the recommendation, are you leaning towards no longer supporting it because the escalation has been included?
I did miss meeting five, so I missed the whole presentation on the reason for the escalation, also the explanation for it logistically not making sense or having future challenges because those other projects weren't included and then being catty-corner. I missed all of that, so I don't really have an answer for that, because I didn't hear the whole presentation as to why we need the additional $30 million.
Can you, what you presented here tonight to us is that the same thing that you presented to the committee on that meeting five?
This is the abbreviated version, but yes, that is the gist of it.
So do you have questions for her that she could answer, so that we can be clear on, as a group, on where we all stand? I respect every committee member's opinion and thought process on this, especially our two board members that sat on the committee. So since you have questions, this is the time to ask. So Aubrey can, I mean, let her get into detail if she needs to.
Yeah, I mean, I think I heard your explanation for the extra escalation, and I assume it's just from bonding capacity and the timeline. So I do understand that. Like I said, it just wasn't the amount that was voted on the last meeting I was at. So I just haven't talked to other committee members to see how they felt about that extra cost.
Ms. Aubrey, I do have a question for you. Could back up one more slide. So if you were queen for a day, how would you order and structure this construction of the four colored boxes?
Well, I think first off, from a master planning standpoint, this is the appropriate adjacencies. I do think it would be a little short-sighted to start swapping some of those boxes. And so if we hold to the adjacencies that are shown, I think either the classroom wing or the Black Box Theater would be the most logical next additions. And then just continue to build towards the middle school is probably the most practical way of doing things. Again, anything's possible.
I think we had a couple of other folks that stood up from the committee, so please come to podium.
So I was one of the few that were able to make that last meeting. Kayla's right, there were, it was not as large of a group as the last meeting, but I do feel like we all very thoroughly discussed the reasons that we had to come back and talk about for a fifth meeting, the overview, why the finagling of getting around two things would change things. I mean, we asked the hard questions. We said, you know, like, we had one particular gentleman said, if this is not here, I'm not doing this. I will stand for the, I mean, we didn't just say, okay, that sounds good. So I just, I want you to know, like, that there was lots of thorough discussion there. And at the end of the day, there is going to be additional cost for escalation, but it's something that we all felt like needs to happen. So we couldn't figure out a way to, we felt like this was a good amount based on what was asked for last year. So, and this tried to cover as much as we could possibly cover. And I don't feel like what was discussed at that fifth meeting was anything too drastic that the people from the fourth meeting would have thrown their hands up about. And we discussed that point as well, so.
Thank you.
I was basically going to say the same thing, but that, but as long as we keep putting it off, it's just going to keep going up and up and up. So it's going to happen the one way or the other.
Terry, I'm going to put you on the spot as the other board member who sits on the committee. Were you at the fifth meeting?
I was not at the fifth meeting, but I do understand escalation. And it's like Simone and Randy said, things are only going to get more expensive as we wait. So let's build what we can build as soon as we can. If we have, you know, and again, being in all the other meetings, looking at, we were doing just an average growth, not a high growth or aggressive growth, but if I feel like we're going to have a higher growth than what we're expecting based on the construction that continues and the development that continues, I don't think we're going to have an issue with the bonding capacity at the time that we need it.
So Terry, do you still support the recommendation as the $354?
Absolutely.
If you all would like to entertain breaking this out in any sort of way, I've got a couple of other scenarios I can show you, if the $355 million does make anybody uncomfortable.
Could, I mean, is there a possibility that we could look at two separate bonds?
Two separate proposals?
Proposals, yeah.
Yes.
In one bond, but proposal A, proposal B, and those be voted on separately? What would that look like? Do you have anything?
Yeah, I've got an option that we can look at here if $355 feels a little too high. What I've done here with the assistance of some others is, what if we break it up by those projects that did receive 100% in the individual vote? That would add up to $286. And I can come back to this in a second, but just to show you the other piece of it, the projects that got between 70% and just under, or less than 100%, putting those potentially as a second bond proposal, that would add up to another $67 million. And that would break out the sixth grade campus lifecycle replacements, the auditorium, and the ag center addition, including locker rooms that will serve for tennis and ag. So you can see, none of those are growth-related projects as far as student seats. Obviously, these all have tremendous impact to the district should they pass, but you're not, you're not impeding on having an elementary school or a middle school, you know, having room for those students to grow. This would certainly help program growth, but it would not hinder student growth, if that makes sense. So this is, this is one option that you all could consider if you decide to break it into separate propositions.
Do you remember off the top of your head, the Black Box, like, using that as our sped classrooms? What kind of figure are we looking at there?
So if I remember correctly, the Black Box budget was close to $9 million, and the sped classroom addition was $5.3, $5.4 million. I did look at that today, based on the question I received last week. And the Black Box includes Black Box, some storage rooms, offices, dressing rooms, and a scene shop. If we take the scene shop off and we just do the Black Box and its support spaces, I believe that that shell is adequately sized to support the sped programs, and we could do that within the $5.3 to $5.4 sped budget, if we, if we hold the scene shop to a future project. So the current recommendation would provide you that flexibility.
How much was multiple propositions discussed with the committee?
It was, it was brought up, but it was never dwelled on or discussed at length, because that, it was just determined that that would be left to you all to decide as support. They were more focused on need, you know, what are the projects that are important?
It was talked about, and as far as they asked questions about it, but like Aubrey said, we, I think they just focused on what projects do we need, and then the board would figure out, all right, we can chop it up this way, or it can be delivered in this fashion.
I did not hear any heartburn about the $300 million threshold being over or under, and maybe Kayla or Terry can help me out if I am forgetting anything, but I didn't hear any heartburn about a number over $300 million within that committee.
So I guess I'm going to ask a question for those committee members that are here. Does multiple propositions give any form of heartburn?
I'm seeing some nodding of heads and shaking of heads. Please come forward. We need your input. We want... We want your input.
Asking a clarifying question, I guess. Are we talking about putting two propositions on the bond, and people can vote one or the other? So...
They can vote for both.
But can they vote, like, I just want to make sure, like, they can't just vote for 67 million, or this number, and leave the other one off?
In theory, they could, yeah.
And then, we're in a world of hurt. So, that's my heartburn there, is that if you put two numbers out there, and one of them is for 67, the other one's for 300, people are going to go, "Oh, yeah." I don't think there's going to be clarity and people understanding this is for, like, and I wanted to say this about the fifth meeting. I think the loudest voice in the room was, "We don't want to make changes to the decisions that were already made." Like, everyone that was at the other meeting, we said we needed these things. We all agreed, we needed these things. These are critical pieces that are needed for this district, classrooms, the facilities. There was absolutely no one in that room that felt comfortable in saying, "Yeah, you know what? Let's take this piece off, so we can keep the number down." When there weren't, every voice in the room wasn't there. We were more worried about, these are the things everyone agreed we needed. And if what has to happen to make that happen is a little bit more money, and truly, when you're up to the 300 million number, we're talking about a little bit more money. But that was the big concern, was we did not want to take away a project that meant something to everyone in the room at the last meeting, and make a change that was going to be detrimental to the district. So, I think that came up multiple times. I think Simone mentioned that as well. But keeping the heart of the project was, was the most important. And I think when we talked about splitting it, that was another concern, was, well, what if they vote for the small one, and we don't get what we need out of the other one? So, yes, heartburn.
So, you're saying, really, that the escalation being less than 10% additional cost was negligent to getting what the district needs?
I felt absolutely everyone in the room did not want to make a change that was going to take a project off the table over something that small. Yes, that was by far the loudest voice in the committee.
Well, and for the record, just to say that, again, if the timeline is shortened, then the cost is just that. It's the cost, and not including the additional escalation.
Right. Because we did feel like everyone had had a voice at the meeting prior. Like, everyone had a chance, we all had a chance to talk. It was 100%. We didn't want to take anything off the table that had been voted for, and for a possibility of having to spend a little bit more money. So, yeah.
Do you feel, Kayla, that the feeling from the committee in the fourth meeting was more about voting 100%, this is our recommendation, these are the projects we think that we need now, and less about the number figure? Or do you feel the opposite?
Having microphone problems. So, the way I understood the fourth meeting to go was we all had individual votes for which projects we would like, or we would agree to go onto a bond. And then, that's why you had some of those at 70%. And then, the final vote was, here's what received 70% or more. Could you, at the end of the day, just live with this number, even though it's higher than you had anticipated? So, like, my group, we were looking at, like, a $250 million bond. But at the end of the day, it was kind of, well, this is what 70% and more wanted. Could you, could you live with that? That's kind of how I understood the vote. It wasn't necessarily you 100% agreed with it, it was, could you live with it? Does that make sense? So, I say to say it's unanimous is a little bit misleading. It was, could you live with this because 70% or more of our members wanted this? If that makes sense?
I also will say, I think it was clear throughout the entire time that this is our recommendation, and this is a board decision. I mean, this is ultimately the decision of the board, but every single thing we discussed was, what do we need for the school district? And that was the conversation throughout. I don't think the number was ever, this is what it's going to be, because we always knew the final decision was coming to the board, for land, for whatever else there was going to need to be added. And so, I think when it comes down to it, the long-range planning was for the projects. What do we need in our school district? And then, how do we make, how do we make that happen? Is the decision of the board. I mean, this is, that's, we're advisory, that's all it is. It's an advisory to you.
It is our decision, but after not passing the last bond, I think I can speak for all of us, that we are very serious about making sure that we have full support of the committee, every member of the committee, and full support of the people that they represented on the committee. Before we call an election, we don't want another election to fail. We don't want to have misinterpreted what our community is asking for, or what our community thinks that our district needs. And so, that is why it might seem like we're splitting hairs, but that 100% support from the committee is vitally important to the success of our district and passing this bond.
I agree, 100%.
The conversation I heard regarding the propositions, the questions that were asked or raised, was, you know, like, it's broken out here. The first proposition is all classrooms. The second proposition would be extracurricular. And I know some of the committee members would have liked to have seen the propositions broken out that way, so that the community understood, these are classrooms that are needed, and then, these are extracurricular projects that we would like to have.
Which I think, if I'm understanding correctly, to your point, this shows that, because there was 100% for what would potentially be proposition one, and there was less than 100% for these other four. Is that basically what you're saying? And I will say, I personally, I like this. I feel like we may, I feel like that would be, we would gain higher support.
And I think there are ways to communicate the two different propositions, that we know the growth is likely the highest priority for you all. That's inevitable, that that's going to have to be addressed, that we can do things in communications that say, you know, the schedules currently are this, and these projects are the ones that tend to be later in the schedule. So, if, let's say, the other one was proposition one, and it doesn't pass, and this, as proposition two does pass, the schedules hold. And you will have to consider going back out for another bond election. That is, that is one option. Because right now, these projects are scheduled a few years out in order to make the middle school and the new elementary school the priority for you all. Again, your decision year upon year, based on funding, but that's how it's currently slated.
Can we go back to the previous slide, just real quick?
Before we go, I'm sorry. One thing while we're on that slide. I guess I don't see these projects as completely extracurricular. Having the lifecycle replacements, I translate that to be heating and air, roof. I don't know what else, but those in particular, especially in light of the temperature changes that we have had over the past few weeks. I think it's pretty important that we have adequate heating and cooling.
What if the sixth grade lifecycle was added to the other proposition? And then, there was classrooms, a proposition for classrooms, and then, a proposition for extracurricular?
You might be able to argue that the auditorium and the ag project center addition are also classrooms. They're just classrooms of a different nature. That would be a theater classroom and ag classrooms. I mean, I know they use the ag center right now for classrooms. Like, they take students out there and teach them things there. So, it'd be like saying that the band hall isn't a classroom. The band hall's absolutely a classroom. There's learning, I mean, learning going on. It's not a traditional classroom with a blackboard and seats and chairs. But, I mean, how many band students do you have right now? Yeah? Sorry to put you on the spot. Or just high school band students? District or high school? District. I mean, that's a very large percentage of our student, our student, our student body. So, same thing with ag, and same thing with the auditorium. Maybe not quite as much of a percentage, but you're still servicing children.
Mr. Walker, how much of the auditorium would be used for regular learning versus just demonstrations and expo? Please come to the mic.
Included with this bond currently, the auditorium would be used eight out of nine periods a day. Every day.
Thank you.
Did someone want to see the previous slide? Okay. I think that's, that's all I have as far as slides for y'all tonight. So, it's a discussion for you.
Can I just add, real quickly? I feel like labeling them classrooms versus extracurricular is not a good idea. I think it's more, in my mind, it's more 100% committee support versus not 100% committee support. I don't look at it as extracurricular versus classrooms. I just look at it as 100% support. And after our failure of our last bond, I feel like going and putting our 100% support things behind, you know, as one proposition is very responsible. And I feel like also, when you look at your auditorium support alone, putting that on a separate proposition, you're going to have support for that. But I think that you, it makes the sticker shock a little, a little bit more palatable, is my personal opinion.
Okay. Just the final thing I have, is just a reminder on dates, which I mentioned at the beginning, the deadline to call the election, should you choose to call an election for May, is February 16th. And you can see the dates that follow from there.
Any other questions for Aubrey, or any other discussion?
Are we going to hold a meeting before or on February 16th?
Yes, ma'am. That's the plan, would be to hold a, to let you guys, you know, digest it and think more about it, and communicate more with committee members, and have a special meeting before the 16th. Yes, ma'am.
Terry, Kayla, any other committee members that are here? Do you feel like meeting again as a committee to clarify anything is needed for a better attendance than the fifth meeting?
I don't think that we need necessarily to meet with the committee again, but I would like to have more participation from the taxpayers, maybe some better advertising for the next meeting, to have more people here to be able to give input, or to just hear the propositions for a vote.
I think, at the end of the day, that's, that's calling a bond and calling a vote, though, isn't it? I mean, you can't, you can't have the public here to, to vote on something that we're putting out propositions to vote for, correct?
No, I just mean, like, having more people in attendance at the next board meeting would be nice, so that the community can understand what we're calling for and what we're voting on.
I kind of feel like it's, the last two meetings, it's been on the agenda. I mean, I'm not sure why they wouldn't have been here last month or this month if they felt strongly about it, and it was on the agenda that was posted. I mean...
Any other questions? Thank you, Ms. Aubrey. Next, we have the consent agenda. Any questions regarding the consent agenda?
I have a question on 8B, the interlocal agreement for Region 10. I know that we're Region 11, so I was wondering if we could have clarification on the need for an interlocal with Region 10? And is there any additional cost to us for having that?
Absolutely, I can answer that. So, I'm filling in for Brandeline. My name's Spencer Davis. I'm the Business Services Coordinator at Region 11. So, the Region 10 is the MRPC, which is the multi-regional purchasing co-op, and it's statewide. And so, you can enter into it whether you are a district in Region 11, Region 10, Region 4, et cetera. We also, Godly has multiple co-ops that they're a part of, such as Region 9, Region 4. So, it's just a way for you to be able to have better stewardship over your funds and to procure or purchase items at a lower cost. And then, the cost is actually paid by vendor participation, so there's no fee associated to joining it.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, you're welcome.
I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Have a motion by Terry, and a second by Marissa. Any further discussion? All those in favor? Motion passes unanimously. And... Okay, we will not go to close session today.
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Okay, we will adjourn at 7:26 PM.